Okay, I will call the regular Monday, October 20th, 2025 Tiffin City Council meeting to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Hayes.
Dear Heavenly Father, we give you glory, honor, and praise. We thank you for gathering us here today to meet on behalf of the citizens of Tiffin. We ask that you continue to give us your wisdom and guidance. We ask for protection for all citizens of Tiffin, in particular our first responders. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Horniman.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reisner.
Here.
Councilmember Sney.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
And Councilmember Dougherty.
Let the record show that six of seven councilmembers are present. We are now under a public hearing pursuant to section 409B of the Charter of the City of Tiffin. Notice is given that this codification of ordinance has been proposed by the following ordinance, 2025-76, an ordinance to revise the codified ordinances by adopting replacement pages thereto and declaring an emergency. In accordance with Charter 409B, a public hearing on these matters will be held on Monday, October 20th, 2025 during the regular meeting of Tiffin City Council at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Now that we are under that, people are welcome to step up to the podium, sign in, and direct any questions or comments to myself. Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is over. Minutes from the October 6th, 2025, regular and committee at the whole meeting were distributed. Are there any substitutions, deletions, corrections? Okay. We're now under Committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reisner.
No report, Madam President.
Law Community Planning, Councilmember, or anybody from Law Community Planning.
No report, Madam President.
Okay. Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Hayes.
Thank you, I do have a report. A meeting was held in city chambers on October 8th, 2025. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation number 25-51, an appointment to, an appointment of the Finance Director for the City of Tiffin. Attending were committee members John Hayes, Kyle Dougherty, and Cheyenne Thacker. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, Law Director Zachary Fowler, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, Finance Director Kathy Kaufman, councilmembers Kevin Reisner, Aaron Jones, and Dennis Sney, and appointee Jill Lindhorst. Councilwoman Hayes called the meeting to order at 5:16 PM. Hayes asked the mayor about the approach he took with filling the position. Mayor Wilkinson said that an outside search was performed that resulted in seven candidates, of which the selected appointee Jill Lindhorst stood out. Wilkinson highlighted Lindhorst being fluent in Ohio Revised Code and the ordinances of Tiffin. He further introduced Lindhorst, noting she is working in the city's tax department. Dutrow stated candidates from both outside, inside and outside the city were interviewed. Kaufman said she initially hired Jill to the city and spoke highly of the work she had done. Lindhorst introduced herself and spoke about her relevant experience, including working for Old Fort Bank and her work in the city's tax department. Lindhorst told the committee she has started working with Kaufman on some duties of the Finance Director. Dutrow told the committee that the council will need to authorize compensation for the position of Acting Director of Finance during the interim period if the appointment is confirmed. Hayes motioned to draft legislation authorizing compensation benefits for the Acting Director of Finance, and Dougherty seconded. The motion passed three to zero. Thacker motioned to accept the mayor's appointment. Hayes seconded, and the motion passed three to zero. With no other business, the meeting was adjourned at 5:36 PM, and that concludes my report.
Okay, great. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Recreation and public property, Councilmember Sney.
Yes, Madam President, I do have a report. A Recreation and Public Property Committee meeting was held Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, in council chambers. The purpose was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 25-45, sale of retention pot between the Willows and Tiffitt, Willows of Tiffitt and Fairland, and number 25-52, grant application for parks, as well as any other business that may come before the committee. Attending were Committee Chair Dennis Sney, and Committee Member Aaron Jones. Also attending were Mayor Wilkinson, City Administrator Dutrow, Law Director Fowler, and Parks Director Bryce Coon. Finally, councilmembers Hayes and Thacker. Sney called the meeting to order at 5:37 PM. Starting with legislation 25-45, Law Director Fowler had received pertinent information only five minutes before tonight's meeting and is asking the committee to table this piece of legislation in order that he may be able to do more background research. This way, the committee will not need to pause, pause it later if something were to come up. When asked of a time, Fowler said he should have all the needed information by the next council meeting. City Administrator added that a third party is doing a survey involving an easement which will involve future legislation. Councilmember Jones made a motion to table this request for legislation, and Sney seconded the motion. Motion carried two to zero. Next committee reviewed mayor's request for the legislation 25-52, grant application for parks. Mayor Wilkinson introduced the Parks Director Coon to expound upon this piece of legislation. This grant is a matching grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Currently, the department is collaborating with a company and would like to create a skate park. The department has $206,000 and hopefully will have more by the time the application is. Director Coon went on to give other examples of what he would like to use the money for. He is fundraising and waiting to see if other grants will come in. I asked for an example of how this grant works. Example, $225,000, the matching would be $225,000, a total of $450,000. Administrator Dutrow reaffirmed that this piece of legislation is for the grant, not for any projects. Jones asked where at Hedges will future projects take place, and Coon said close to the band shelter. Fowler asked Coon if he had asked soccer club for any donations, explaining the matching part of the grant. Director Coon explained on how the donations are made to the city and then to the project fund. Fowler went on to explain that this grant is federal money awarded through the state. Also, there needs to be a sign saying the park is funded through the land and water conservation. Finally, in accepting this money, this land must remain as a park forever. Those restrictions have already been placed for other awards given. Councilmember Jones made a motion for the Law Director to draft legislation, including an emergency since the grant application is due November 14th. Sney seconded the motion. Motion carried two to zero. With no further business, Council Chair Sney adjourned the meeting at 5:49 PM.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on that report? Okay. I also have a Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee report. A Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee meeting was held on October 17th, 2025 at 4:00 PM in council chambers. Attending were Committee Members Cheyenne Thacker, Aaron Jones, Scott Horniman, and Kevin Reisner. Also attending were City Administrator Nick Dutrow, Law Director Zachary Fowler, and Mayor Lee Wilkinson. Thacker called the meeting to order. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation number 25-50, Streetlight and Alley, and number 25-53, Tiffin Dora Review, and any other business that may come before them. Dutrow gave the committee information on mayor's request for legislation 25-50. There is a resident who lives in an apartment complex on Perry Street. While the address is listed as Perry Street, the entry to each of the apartments in the complex are actually on an alleyway. The resident found someone trying to break into their car and would like an additional light in the alleyway for increased safety. The cost to the city would be $103 per year. Reisner knew of the issue for the resident and his ward and wondered if the installation of the new Wendy's location was providing more light. Reisner planned to check in with the resident and report back before the committee moved forward with legislation. Reisner motioned to table a discussion for the purpose of collecting more information from the resident and his ward. Horniman seconded the motion. The motion passed four to zero. Wilkinson gave the committee a report regarding Tiffin Dora. The mayor asked Public Works Superintendent Burner and Chief Polly to give him feedback on their professional experiences with Dora and Tiffin, and read emails from both of them. Burner said Dora has not made a noticeable impact on sanitation or cleanliness. Polly said that their initial concerns have not materialized. Further, he believes Dora has seemingly been a success, as there are no incidents directly tied to it that he could find in their system. He acknowledged that there were some challenges in the early stages regarding glitter and trash management, but those issues have been addressed and have not posed a problem in recent years. Horniman said he has not seen any issues and keeps an eye on trash bins during events downtown. Fowler explained to the committee that the city must review the operation of Dora and determine whether to approve its continued operation or dissolve it every five years. Jones motioned to have the Law Director prepare legislation to continue Dora for an additional five years. Reisner seconded the motion. Discussion included a question from the mayor about notices given to the public. Fowler said notice would be given and a public hearing would occur. He also commented that Wapakoneta put a post on their Facebook page asking for public comment. Horniman asked if there would be an annual review of Dora. Wilkinson stated that there was no specific plan, but that he would review it from time to time. Dutrow said that the city has not been made aware of issues from the public. The motion passed four to zero. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 4:19 PM. And that concludes my report. Any comments, questions, or otherwise? Okay. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Horniman.
No report, Madam President.
Okay. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee at the whole? Okay. We're now under reports of the officers. His honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, it is just about that time of year for those leaves to start falling off the trees, and our Public Works crew is getting ready for that, so there will be leaf bags available at some of the local merchants, including Al's Convenience Store, Bassett's Market, Great Lakes Ace Hardware, Kroger, Pit Stop 1, Pit Stop, Pit Stop 2, the drive-thru on Sandusky Street, and the Point Drive-Thru. So try to get those bags before you get your leaves all rinked up and get them out to the curb. Leaf pickup will be from October 27th, like one week from today, all the way up until November 21st, so get them picked up and get them out there early. Try to avoid excessively heavy bags of wet leaves, as requested by the people who pick them up. Also, sewer construction could begin on South Sandusky Street between Benner Street and West Market Street as early as this Wednesday. Given that the sewer is located in the middle of the roadway, South Sandusky Street will be fully closed for the work. The out-of-town detour has already been set up, so hopefully most northbound trucks are already detoured off of Sandusky Street in that area. Aqua waterline replacement is on Toom Street this week. The Halloween parade is coming up this Saturday at 10:00 AM, with the official citywide trick-or-treat on Sunday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. You might have noticed that Operation Hallmark wrapped the light poles on Friday with the help of Tiffin University tennis team. Thank you, Tiffin University tennis team, for all of the volunteering hours there. So the Christmas lights are up, kinda, not everything is up. They should be turned off until at least after Halloween. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the Seneca County Health Commissioner Julie Richards. She has information about the health levy for us.
Good evening. My name is Julie Richards. I'm here on behalf of the Seneca County General Health District, just to talk a little bit about our upcoming levy that is on the ballot November 4th. For those of you who haven't voted yet, we're encouraging you all to vote yes. And I just wanted to talk a little bit, thank you, a little bit about what that levy means. It's a renewal levy. And so what that means is that no new taxes for our residents, and we'll simply continue the collection of the current levy funds, which is a yearly total of $467,913. So to simplify, for a $100,000 valued property owner, this means a tax of $8 a year, which is what everyone is currently paying, and that would just continue for the next five years to cover the levy. What the levy does for us is helps us finance all of the programs that we provide, and I have some cards to pass out, too, if you don't mind, but those are our emergency preparedness. Actually, I can hand them to you if that's okay. Our emergency preparedness, so for many of you that don't know, we do respond to any health-related emergency that may happen within the county. For an example, the most recent thing that we responded to was the train derailment in Attica. We provided cleanup efforts and were involved in the actual, at-the-time scene with the cleanup and maintaining and figuring out all the logistics involving that train derailment and how to make it safe for the environment and for the community. It also allows us to put together trainings in order for our staff to be prepared for in the event of an emergency. It provides funding, the levy provides funding for our school nursing services. Right now, we have contracts with Tiffin City Schools. We have contracts with Bridges and, trying to think of the other one, Mohawk. So we are involved in all of those school districts. Provides funding for our WIC programs, which is Women, Infant, and Children Nutrition and Breastfeeding Support for those who are, meet the economic determinants of that program. The funds also help us with our vital statistics, so providing birth and death certificates, our senior citizen health services, our nursing and immunization clinics, drug prevention education, our epidemiology and communicable disease investigations. We do have a full-time epidemiologist here in Seneca County, so we're really fortunate to have her. Our family planning clinic, nuisance complaint investigations, our complex medical help program, restaurant and food service inspections, and much more. So again, I'm just here to educate and make sure that everyone is aware of what the levy does mean, and that it is no additional tax money for us to continue the services that we currently provide. Thank you. Any questions for me? I do have levy signs, if anybody's interested, yard signs, if anybody is interested. I have them in my car. We also have them available in the lobby of our, the Health Department. If anybody is interested in putting one up in their yard, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Horniman.
I had a question. It's not levy-related. I think that those services are great and very well-needed, and I think it's a very good value for what you get. With the Seneca County Health Commission, the way that it's made up, I'm not sure how the charter and whatnot is set up, but it's my understanding that Tiffin kinda has limited representation on that board, based on us being, you know, the biggest city and the, you know, the biggest city and the county seat. You know, there's a lot of representation and, you know, like, I've just, that's the feedback that I've gotten, and, you know, it's one of those where I don't know how the process works, but, you know, from a city standpoint, you know, it's one of those where if there is a health thing, you know, the city should have, you know, at least equal or greater representation and vote on the health board, is my assumption, so.
I can maybe address that a little bit. So the population in Seneca County is 55,000. Population of Tiffin is about 18,000, so our representation in the City of Tiffin is about one-third of what it is for the whole county. And so the rest of the county is divided up with just Seneca County, but also then Fosteria and the villages. So I feel like we have pretty good representation. I haven't done the math to see if it comes out to be exactly equal to the population differential, but I feel pretty comfortable with our representatives that we have from the City of Tiffin doing their part on the health board.
I think right now I can think of at least three, possibly four, that are from the City of Tiffin and live or work within the City of Tiffin right now on our board, so.
Any other questions? Awesome. Thank you so much for coming, Julie.
Thank you, Commissioner Richards. And those services that you mentioned that are on the card here, those are things that we probably don't notice because they are continuing, but we would definitely notice if they went away. So keep that in mind. We don't want them to go away. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Acting Director of Finance, Jill Lindhorst.
Thank you, Madam President. I have several items to amend the 2025 budget to appropriate funds to the general fund, Jefferson Health Fund, and the Park and Recreation Fund. I'll go through each of those separately. That way, if you have any questions, you can ask me them now. The first one is a $10,750 request into the finance budget to update the Sequel license for our accounting software. The next one is a $500,000 appropriation to the income tax transfers. This is, this is to appropriate funds so we can make those transfers every month until the end of the year. We have some extra income that's been coming in through income tax. I think we're at 3.9%. So we, we, you know, we just need to be able to make those transfers every month. So that is the reasoning behind that. It's not a bad thing to have a little bit of more income there. The next one is a $30 donation to the police. The next one is a $3,434.83 grant for the Ohio EMS program, and that is for the fire department. Okay, and then, let me see here. Then the next one is for the Jefferson Health Fund. We are asking for $725,000 to be appropriated there. That is just to be able to make the payments on the bills through the end of the year. Oh, my apologies, I missed, I missed one on the general fund, so I'll go back to that. There is a $5,000 donation for the general fund, and that is for fireworks after or during the Christmas event in December. And then, the final one is for the Park and Recreation. That is to appropriate more funding. We, we have some bills that are due for the porta potty rentals at the parks, so in order to make those payments, we need to do that. There has, the reasoning, we, we need to appropriate funds. We have soccer and fall baseball leagues at the parks, so that is requiring increased use of those, those facilities. So, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Dutrow.
Yes, thank you. First off, thank you, Jill. This is her first meeting, and I think she, we really gave her a baptism by fire by having her do the Finance Director's Report before she's even officially been, been approved for the Finance position. Just to reiterate on there, those first appropriations that the Acting Finance Director was discussing, those were prepared as ordinance 2025-86. And then, the other is, the other was Finance Director's Request F25-47, which also was put into 86 there. So she's asking for suspension on that for this evening.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Horniman.
Thank you. So the $500,000 is in excess with, where we have extra income taxes going in that we're putting into there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine.
Yeah. So we, the percentage is a little higher than, you know, and we, we have to make those transfers every month, the 25% for the streets and roads, and also a 10% to capital. So, so we make those transfers every month, and, and just because the income is a little bit more, we need to make those transfers, and it is outside our budget amount.
Great. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
I also have the September finance report, financial report. I will go ahead and start reading that. Total receipts for the month is $4,839,493.99. Total expenses for the month is $5,028,439.62. The general fund unencumbered balance is $6,745,538.13. The income tax receipts for September 2025 were $1,307,523.81. The total annual decrease in income tax collections for September 2025 compared to September 2024 is $3,617.59. Year-to-date income tax receipts are up 3.9, 3.94%, sorry. The .25 portion of the income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for September 2025 is $163,093.26. The portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 331 for Capital Improvements for September 2025 is $114,443.06. The unexpended balance of all funds is $44,249,481.87, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period.
Great, thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept the finance report for month-end, in banking reconciliation for month ending September 30th, 2025.
Okay, so there's a second. Councilwoman Horniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
That concludes-
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Law, Zachary Fowler.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I do have a report for counsel. So, just a few items. First, just to go along with Councilmember Snae's report earlier, did look into the issue about the sale of that property and confirmed with the city engineer that that can go forward, and I understand the committee will meet again to discuss that. Second item is, if you recall, Ordinance 2025-84 was the dedication of that connecting portion of Progress Parkway. Just wanted to let you know that that's been recorded, so at least that final step of that street dedication is taken care of. And the big part is the remaining construction of it, which will occur in a couple of years. And then finally, on DORA, I just wanted to confirm a few things. One, I confirmed with the Division of Liquor Control, they will in fact want a copy of that once that's passed. And then, two, just a reminder that as part of the process, the statute does require a notice in the newspaper about a public hearing for it before you vote on that. So, I'll work with the clerk to make sure that that is taken care of. But, Madam President, if you wouldn't mind then announce a, a public hearing for that later during the meeting, that would be great.
At the next regular meeting, or?
That is, I'll leave that to your discretion, whether you want it for the next meeting or the meeting after. But either's fine. There's no time period in the statute as far as how much advanced notice there has to be. So, either way, I think we would have time to publish that.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. We are now under written communications.
Thank you, Madam President. We have Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 25-54, Permanent Storm Sewer Easements.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 25-54 will be assigned to the Streets, Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 25-55, 2026 Street Paving Program and City Lot Number Four Improvements.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 25-55 will be assigned to the Streets, Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-25-45, to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the police, fire, income tax transfers, and insurance expense.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-25-45 has been prepared for this evening's meeting as Ordinance 25-86.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-25-46, to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the General Fund.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-25-46 has been prepared for this evening's meeting as Ordinance 25-86.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-25-47, to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Parks and Recreation Contractual Services Budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-25-47 has been prepared for this evening's meeting as Ordinance 25-86.
And lastly, we have Finance Director Kaufman's letter dated October 17th, appointing Jill Lindhorst as Acting Director of Finance.
This letter will remain on file in the clerk's office.
And that concludes the written communications.
Okay. We are now under other, I'm sorry, we are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step up to the podium, sign in, introduce yourself, and address your questions or comments to me. Okay. Seeing none, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? None? Okay. We are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution Number 2025-40, introduced by Dennis Snae. A resolution renaming Applejack Park to Louisa K. Fast Park, renaming the existing Louisa K. Fast Park on State Route 101 to Tiffin East Park, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Resolution 25-40. Councilwoman Snae.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of Resolution 25-40.
Okay. Is there a second? Councilman Jones?
I second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Horniman.
Yeah, this is the, the ordinance to rename Applejack Park to Louisa K. Fast Park and such, and over the discussions, it's, you know, this is right in the heart of the Second Ward, it's right on the corner of Apple and Jackson Street, and it's a, there's a lot of history behind this area and this whole thing, and especially Louisa K. Fast, and to honor her, to rename the park that was catty-cornered to her former home is very appropriate. I was kind of on the fence. I thought we could keep it Applejack, you know, in memory of Louisa K. Fast, but I think there's, and the mayor brought it up in, in committee, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of, it's kind of a rebranding. There's a lot of really cool things going on. I mean, our Parks Department's out there putting up the equipment, redoing, you know, the parking lot. There's a structure out there. With the road closed, you literally have to go down Jackson. It's nice out, I got my windows down, and I've had five different residents go, "You know what I hear over there? Kids playing." And it's, it's awesome. It's really cool. So, that's just my feedback.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Resolution 2025-40 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-47, introduced by John Hayes. A resolution authorizing the compensation and benefits of the Acting Director of Finance and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of this resolution. Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes, I'd like to motion for immediate passage of Resolution 2025-47, suspending council's three-reading rule.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Reesner.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilwoman Hayes.
Yep, this is for the interim period of which former, at this point, former Finance Director Kathy Kaufman has retired, but it's not effective until November 1st, and she has appointed Jill Lindhorst as Acting Director of Finance, and this will kind of match the pay for this small period to the first-year Director of Finance pay level.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, the suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, the emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Resolution 2025-47 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-48, introduced by John Hayes. A resolution approving Mayor's appointment of Jill Lindhorst as the Director of Finance beginning November 1st, 2025.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-48. Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes, I'd like to motion for passage of Resolution 2025-48.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Reesner?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes, I'd like to commend the mayor and his team for a very thorough search, external and internal candidates, and very timely to find another candidate, and so far, it seems like a, a good fit for the city and for, for our team, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll add, I agree. Okay, seeing no more, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Resolution 2025-48 passes with a vote of six to zero. Congratulations, Jill.
Resolution Number 2025-49, introduced by Dennis Snae. A resolution authorizing the city administrator or Parks Director to apply for the 2026 Land and Water Conservation Fund LWCF Grant Program and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-49. Councilwoman Snae.
Yes, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Resolution 25-49, suspending city council's three-reading rule.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Jones?
I second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Snae.
Yes, Madam President. We, this has to be by November 14th. We could have another reading, but I think the, the Director of Parks, everyone else involved would be more at ease if we just pass it tonight.
Any further discussion? Councilman Horniman.
I don't know. I think we're playing loose and fast with the three-readings suspension and such and everything, with the health and safety and any of those categories. I love the Parks Department. I think they do awesome work. It's, yeah, I don't know.
Yes.
Just, for everyone's understanding, the suspension has no requirement. You can suspend or not suspend. There's not a standard under the charter. It's the emergency portion that has to be for that public health benefit, et cetera. So, just, it's a little bit of splitting here, so that's the difference between the two. In this case, there's a federal deadline of November 14th, so whether you suspend now or not, doesn't get to Councilmember Horniman's issue, but regardless, you're going to have to do an emergency so that the deadline can be met, because even if you pass it tonight, you need the emergency
Right.
for November 14th.
If, yeah, if we wanted to pass, right. Okay, Councilman Horniman?
I mean, this is one of those where, you know, it's kind of, I'll hold my nose and probably vote for it and such just because they need it, but like, the reason for the three-reading rule is so that news and word gets out and people have a chance to get their input into us. I mean, that's, I think that's very important in a local government setting and such and everything. I think it's very, very important, and we keep doing this, and, you know, I just, I keep having my qualms about it, that's all.
Okay, any other discussion? I will also add, I totally see where you're coming from with wanting to make sure that people understand what's happening at their city government level and that they get a chance to speak up and say something. I will say, in this situation, I slightly disagree only because it is a grant, and so there are only benefits if we get this grant, and if we have time to submit it in a timely fashion and, and do it with ease, so that's just my... Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, the suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, the emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Resolution 25-49 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance Number 2025-76, introduced by Scott Horniman. An ordinance to revise the codified ordinances by adopting replacement pages thereto and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 25-76. Councilman Horniman.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of Ordinance 25-76.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilman, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Find all the words together, apparently. Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Horniman.
Yeah, this is to update our codified ordinances. We have a book in the back that has, is full of them, and these are, will supply replacement pages and also update the online. And for those listening, the online on the city website, if you go to codified ordinance under city council, that is a valuable, valuable resource that you can find, and it's very user-friendly, and you can find pretty much anything you do. I have a bunch of screenshots, so when I talk to residents about different violations that are kind of tiki-tacky and stuff, and, you know, I say, "Well, you're in violation of this ordinance under city code. It's right here," and I have, I do a screenshot on my phone, and I read it, what it says, and I go, you know, so it's very helpful.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll ask the clerk, clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, the emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Ordinance 25-76 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance Number 2025-77, introduced by Dennis Snae. An ordinance amending Section 935.04 of the codified ordinances to allow sale, possession, or consumption of alcohol at Oakley Park and Rotary Club of Tiffin Centennial Park and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 2025-77. Councilwoman Snae.
Yes, thank you, Mad President. I move for passage of Ordinance 25-77.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Hayes.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. Councilman Horniman?
Yeah, with this and the original ordinance and such, the only place where they could do like permit alcohol things where it hedges boyer, and this expands it out so that for events and such like Oakley Park and other, they can, you know, have that option and such and have it, you know, and, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, the emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Ordinance 2025-77 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance Number 2025-78, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. An ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property located at 17 North Washington Street in the City of Tiffin, Ohio.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 25-78. Yes, Councilwoman Reesner.
I move for passage of Ordinance 2025-78.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Horniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes, this is the former, kind of called the side deck lot, the T-Sup lot at 17 North Washington Street, and it was in the agreement that it would transfer back to the city once environmental issues were resolved. They are resolved, and the property will remain a parking lot.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Ordinance 25-78 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance Number 2025-85, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance to approve the continuation of City of Tiffin's designated outdoor refreshment area, DORA.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 2025-85.
Ordinance Number 2025-86, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the General Fund, Jefferson Health Fund, and Park and Recreation Fund.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 2025-86. Councilwoman Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Ordinance 2025-86, suspending city council's reading rule.
Okay. Is there a second? Councilwoman Hayes.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes. Councilwoman Reesner.
This deals with fund transfers through the 101 General Fund, 242 Parks and Recreation, and 660 Jefferson Health Fund. Deals with payments of bills through the end of the year. Porta potties for the Parks and Recreation.
and 660 Jefferson Health Fund. Deals with payments of bills through the end of the year. Porta potties for the Parks and Recreation. Couple of, looks like we got a grant for the Fire Department. Income tax transfers, a couple of donations, 30 for the Fire Department, 5,000 for fireworks at Christmas. Appreciate the donations for the, that we got in, and also the software for the Finance Department.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll in the suspension.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, the suspension passes with a vote of five to one. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll in the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Ordinance 2025-86 passes with a vote of five to one.
That concludes the legislation, Madam President.
Thank you, and? We are now under other business. Do we want to start with swearing in?
We can hold that to the end, if you'd like.
Okay, that sounds good. We can end on something festive.
To your other announcements, sure. Sure.
Okay, I will announce a Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee meeting for October 27th at 5:15 PM in council chambers. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss mayor's request for legislation number 25-54, number 25-55, going back over what we tabled at the previous meeting with the alley, streetlight, and any other business that comes before that committee. Councilwoman Snae.
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to announce a Recreation and Public Property Committee meeting. It'll be on October 29th, that's Wednesday, 5:30 in the council chambers, and to discuss the mayor's request for 25-45, the retention pot, the willows of Tiffin, and anything else that come before the committee.
Okay, and I'd also like to announce a public hearing for ordinance 25-85. Let me look up the date. For November 3rd, during the regular city council meeting. This will happen after roll call. And I think that's it, unless there's anything else before we, yes, Councilman Horniman.
Candidate's night is Wednesday, this Wednesday, over at Tiffin Middle School at 7:00 PM. They did do a live stream, at least they have in the past, and everything like that, so everyone that's running for office will be there and such and everything, and it's, I think it's really good to inform yourself as a voter and get to know the personalities and such, and just be engaged in the whole process, so.
Great, thank you. Any other business? Okay.
All right.